Okay, we're good. Thank you all. We will call to order our town council meeting for Monday, June the 10th. We have conducted for 30 minutes an open forum that we call Council Chat, and we greatly appreciate all of you that participated in that. Before we call to order, and sorry for those of you that are sitting through this again, I'd like to make one comment. At our last council meeting, a group of residents of our community brought their concerns before us in regards to development on the Fort Mill bypass. The council and town staff began immediate research on their concerns in regards to a gas station on the corner lot beside a school. We reviewed all decisions on zoning and ordinances for this site. We contacted the Environmental Protection Agency and the Department of Health and Environmental Control. They both provided responses to us. These are the subject matter experts that we are required to turn to. We asked for state and federal assistance and guidance. We discussed the concern many times with the developer, the business involved, and the Fort Mill School District. The response from the Department of Health and Environmental Control was, and I'm reading this from them, "There are no de-hec underground storage tank regulations that will prohibit this development." From the Environmental Protection Agency, "The EPA has no regulations or guidelines that determine distance requirements for a gas station next to a school. The federal underground storage tank regulation does not address siting requirements for gas stations." We responded to media requests, and for those of you that are with the press, I know you'll agree with me, it's very difficult when we do a 15-minute interview and you can only use a snippet of it. So, I assure you, it is what it is. Unfortunately, as the group has sought and obtained legal representation, it is a general practice with any business or organization, we must and have referred all communication requests from the group to our attorney. We're unable to discuss this issue with the group directly. That is unfortunate and sad. We take all concerns seriously. We will continue to respectfully listen to our citizens. When unconstrained by legal actions, we will respond. I will thank each of you in advance for conducting yourselves with the respect and decorum demanded in this forum. Should anyone disrupt that decorum, you will be asked to leave so that we can continue the business at hand." With that, again, thank you all for what you have done thus far, and I look forward to hearing. Do I have a sign-in sheet that I can be provided? Again, close quarters. Woman my size couldn't get between that table and that podium. If you will, we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and Councilman Helms will provide an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for another beautiful day you've given us. We thank you for the many blessings of life. We pray that you give us the wisdom to conduct the talent business tonight. We give you praise and honor for it all, in your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. All right. Council, you have been provided the minutes from the May 13 council meeting. Do you have any changes, deletions, or additions?
Hearing the move to approve the rate.
All right, we have a motion to approve, and we have a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you, Virginia, if you would document, that was unanimous. Public comment. Pursuant to Section 2-46 of the Code of Ordnances for the Town of Fort Mill, any resident may appear before council for the purpose of providing public comments on any municipal matter except personnel matters. Those who wish to speak must sign the public comment sheet prior to the start of the meeting. I do believe we have quite a few folks signed in, that's great. You will be limited to three minutes each, we do this consistently, and on the chat, I let some go over because I felt like they needed the time to air what their concerns were. So with that, Kristy and Rick, you both spoke previous, would you like to speak again? Okay, I got a no from Rick. Kristy, no? You okay? All right. Then we, and Kristen, you don't want to speak again? Okay, that's fine. I also have, is it Jocelyn? Josh?
Yochun.
Yochun, oh, that's pretty. Okay. Genevieve, Sebastian, and Franny, are any of these? Okay, thank you. Grace Morrell. And if I mispronounce names, it's not because I mean to, I'm sorry. Hi, Grace, if you'll state your address, please, for the record.
Grace Morrell, 1183 Thomas Knapp Parkway, Fort Mill.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I would actually like to read an open letter that I wrote to the Town of Fort Mill as well as 7-Eleven. "I shouldn't be here, none of us should be here." Those were the words of a mother standing in front of the Fort Mill School District Board last week, and in fact, she's here today. And boy, did those words resound with me. Why? Because I shouldn't have been there either, nor should any of the other parents that were there advocating for our children's and teachers' health and safety on something that shouldn't even be considered in this day and age. Our agenda item, the one that everyone keeps hearing about, a gas station that is scheduled to go in less than 250 feet from our children's elementary school, Dobie's Bridge Elementary School. A gas station that will be so close to all the children and teachers that they are going to have higher levels of exposure via inhalation to the cancer-causing chemical benzene. It will be on their playground and through the school's HVAC system every single day that they're in attendance. A toxic chemical that is known to cause leukemia and other cancers of blood cells. Just to paint the picture as clearly as I can, these are children as young as five years old, children that are developing and therefore especially vulnerable to toxins. Children like mine who have asthma and other medical conditions, which puts them at an even higher risk of developing and worsening health issues due to this chemical. Do you think I'm overreacting or exaggerating? Think again. I was uneducated on the hazards too, but it didn't take me very long at all to do some research to see why having a gas station this close to our children's school is a major concern, especially when their playground and HVAC sits below the gas station's proposed location. Since benzene is heavier than air, it's going to sink down and sit in the very place that they play. The response that we've received is that the area is zoned highway commercial. Therefore legally, a gas station can be built there, so there's nothing that can be done at this point. But I beg to differ. If children come first every day, which is the Fort Mill School District's motto, then let's put that into action and find a way to stop this together. We've taken the time to do the research, now it's everyone else's turn. In a country where we do so much to keep ourselves healthy and protect our environment, it baffles me that the appropriate rezoning or variances weren't put in place to prevent something like this from happening once the school's location was approved. And to think that the zoning overlay amendment was approved after the school opened and still no restriction was added to prevent a gas station from going in so close is unbelievable. We have laws about the sale of alcohol and tobacco near schools. Schools are deemed a drug-free zone, and specific speed limits are put in place around them, yet placing a gas station this close to a school was a complete oversight. Why? Because it's legal. Well, I'm here to tell you that just because something is legal does not make it right. Some have mocked our efforts, and that's expected. My guess is, those people are either misinformed or have not educated themselves on the dangers that lie ahead if this gas station isn't moved. Mock us all you want, but here's what I do know. I've taken the time to read the studies, and I've listened to the experts, and one thing is a resounding truth. Significant elevations in the risk of childhood leukemia have been associated with environmental exposure to gasoline. Our children are at risk for serious health conditions if this gas station is built at its current location. I've never made myself this vulnerable, but, I'm sorry, I've never made myself this vulnerable, but if making myself vulnerable to what this may bring means raising awareness and requesting action to protect our children, then so be it. Who better to advocate for their health and safety than us, the people who love and care for them and want to show them that anything worth fighting for never comes easy? Respectfully, Grace Morrell.
Thank you. Barry?
Yes, ma'am.
And I would not even, is it Drucker?
Yeah. Don't bother with Charlie.
Are you a doctor? You write like one.
So, to make sure I cover all my points, I want to just read some gibberish here.
Sure, will you tell us your address first?
It's gibberish to me, but it probably makes sense to you.
I'm sure, will you give us your address first?
Yes.
And please do not punish him on the time clock, and I have let others go over, so you're fine.
My name's Barry Drucker. My wife and I live at 1705 Till Hawk Way, Fort Mill. We do not have grandchildren attending Fort Mill schools. What I have to say tonight regarding the gas station at Dobie's Bridge in Fort Mill Parkway. My wife and I moved to Fort Mill in April 2018, and looking for an alternative Charlotte, we settled on Fort Mill because of its housing and tranquil appearance. The MPV property is only a mile and a half from our home, and the signs stated retail stores and Dobie Bridge Market. We thought, well, maybe we'll get some upscale shopping and possibly a nice coffee shop we can walk to, sit out on the patio, and enjoy ourselves. With a name like The Crossings at Dobie Bridge, it's got to be classy. Last month, we found that Fort Mill, in secrecy, had chosen instead another convenience store with a gas station. We already have a Valero convenience store slash gas station less than two miles from the MPV property on Dobie's Bridge. We also have two more, not eight minutes, from MPV property near the Walgreens Pharmacy. That's on Tom Hill, Tom Hall. Why would Fort Mill risk the loss of tax revenues from these businesses and allow another like it close by? Ah, the light bulb came on. The new high school. The town wants to prey upon new high school children with increased addictive products, which by the way is listed on a line item in financial statements from gas and convenience stores. I'll make up, increased addictive products like sugar-loaded soda beverages, candy, snacks, and the sale of lottery tickets, and cigarettes. Why do we, as residents of Fort Mill, give up to, let's see, what do we, as residents of Fort Mill, give up to adults leaders of our town? An FHA report notes that property values decrease the closer homes are to a convenience store gas station. How can we convince people to buy $300,000 to $900,000 homes off Fort Mill Parkway when there's no assurance that they will be faced with the possibility that other types of gas station businesses will be allowed limiting their property appreciation? My wife and I drive to Charlotte to shop at nicer stores. Look how inviting Baxter Village is. This is the type of environment we need, not more gas stations. The impact on Fort Mill traffic would be enormous. As a rule of thumb, a 2,000-square-foot store with 10 pumps would generate about 3150 trips a day. Add on to that figure gas delivery trucks, gas and delivery trucks, and we have a mess. This increased traffic, as well as Gattaba Ridge High School traffic, will bottleneck Fort Mill Parkway from Highway 21 to Interstate 77. Okay, so that's what I've read. Guys, wake up. You've got a bunch of people here who are pissed off. You've got a plaintiff's attorney probably just dripping to get a hold of this case. Do the right thing. Reconsider your decision here. You're sticking your necks out, I'm telling you. Thank you.
Thank you. Kate Colosi?
Colosi.
Thank you. That's close.
Yeah.
It was pretty close. Okay, thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
If you will give us your address, please, ma'am.
Sure. 1513 Melissa Drive.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. I just want to let you know on behalf of our group, we have not secured a legal representation, so I believe that means we can still have an open discussion between us and you guys since we have not secured legal representation.
I'm sorry to advise you, but your attorney from Baltimore did contact us.
We don't have an attorney from Baltimore.
Mr. Mack, you are our general attorney, are you not? Did you receive a call from an attorney in Baltimore representing this particular group?
He represented it, he was representing.
Thank you very much.
No.
Well...
That's a lie.
I'm sorry. You need to talk to him.
He's not our attorney.
He's our lawyer.
He's not our lawyer.
Sorry.
I don't know anybody anymore.
I'm sorry.
Okay, well, that just goes to show that you guys are not doing your job because no one spoke to us on behalf of that, no one sought to seek out the truth, so that just goes to show you. I moved here from California with my husband, I have two kids. My son Elijah is a first grader at Dobie's Bridge, and we do our research. This is, this area we researched. We could have moved anywhere, we chose here, we chose this district, so we would like our son to continue to go to this school, but obviously that's up in question at this point for us. With that, when we moved here, I always, the first thing they told us was that that property was going to be a Harris teeter. So, I've always known about the Harris teeter, we've always have heard about that. The gas station I did not know about until April. I think that's kind of weird since it was amended in 2014, that no one knew about this gas station. There was no signage. MPV still has their sign that shows a nice-looking retail space, but there was no signage of a gas station, let alone information. I'm not quite sure what policy, after you amend something, that you have to inform the surrounding areas that are in proximity, and I don't, was that, did that take place? Because I believe you would have had to have contacted the school since you did do that after, since amendment was made after the school was open. And then unfortunately, it appears that the school in itself has dropped the ball by not appealing that decision, knowing that they should have been required to know that a gas station was going there. So with that being said, sorry, I'm losing my train of thought here, but, so in doing my research, I researched benzene. I went via the CDC website, which you all can go and look at benzene, and obviously, the biggest thing that I keep thinking about that keeps coming to play, which is on the CDC's website, is that benzene is heavier than air. You have a gas station that is sitting predominantly higher than the playground, so that, those vapors are going to fall, they're going to drop right onto that playground. Benzene does not completely dissipate in water. If there's any precipitation of any sort, it will linger. I don't know exactly how long, you're going to have a contamination on your hands with that playground, with those kids. Benzene, you can inhale it, and if those kids touch it and benzene is still sitting there, they can ingest it. So, that is a huge issue. As stated, cancer, immediate effects are going to be dizziness, vomiting, this can happen within minutes and hours of high exposures to benzene, and considering the fact that they are going to be exposed to it on a regular basis is a huge concern of mine. I understand that I am out of time.
You're fine, take your time.
But I am livid. This should not be happening. This should have been addressed years ago. We should not be sitting here addressing this issue right now. My child is going to be at risk. He's got allergies, he's got an autoimmune sensitivity, that is not okay, and I'm not going to be a mother that just willingly sends him there consciously knowing that he's going to be exposed to something that will detrimentally affect his health at some point in time, it's just a matter of when. So, we are asking you to engage in a conversation with us. We need to have a conversation as a community, as well as with 7-Eleven, as well as with MPV. We've reached out to the EPA, they want to help facilitate that with us, and we want to get that conversation going because this, this needs to happen sooner than later. And unfortunately, we're on a time crunch on both parties with all of this. And considering that we do not have legal representation, and we are telling you and stating you this, that is not our lawyer, that is a lie, that needs to be addressed and fixed immediately. And that should mean that we can have a conversation because we do not have legal representation. So, I really hope that you would get in contact with us because we have obviously tried to reach out with all of you at this point, and no one has communicated with us personally or addressed our group individually. So, there needs to be a conversation, we need to have contact with you all, so I hope that you would take the time to do so, please.
Thank you. Kristy, did you want to speak again? You said no, right? I already asked you that. Melissa Cardona?
Yes.
You already spoke? Okay.
Can I defer my time for seven hours?
If they're signed up, yes.
Okay.
If they're not, unfortunately, I can't. Mark DeJesus?
Okay, sure.
You want to speak again? That's fine.
Do you need my address again?
Yes.
Sure, no problem. It's 1207 Argus River Drive, Melissa Cardona.
Thank you.
So, I just, who is the attorney that reached out to you?
A gentleman named Richard Klein.
Richard Klein?
From Baltimore.
Okay.
He's not an attorney.
Well, he represented that his firm was representing you all, that's exactly what he said, and I don't, I mean, I don't, I didn't ask for...
That's inferior, Mary. A firm?
Excuse me.
That's what he said.
Excuse me. You, this forum has been perfect to this moment, but we will not talk over one another. He's trying to give the information, okay? Give the information.
Whether he represents you or not, I don't know, but as soon as I got that call, that's when I say, "Don't talk, okay? We can't communicate."
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Sure. So, did he represent that he was with a law firm?
He said his firm.
But did he say he was an attorney?
I don't remember, to be honest with you.
So, he didn't say he was an attorney, nor did he say he was a law firm?
I looked him up, I think he is a lawyer. Okay, but he's not. It doesn't matter.
It does matter though.
Stop, just a second. If he's not representing you, and he will send me something and say he's not, then that's fine, we can open the lines.
And all bets are off.
That's all we need.
That's great.
So, the next question I was asking quickly though is, who is the group of people that are allegedly represented by this non-attorney?
I don't know. He just said the group in, what's the subdivision?
Mass.
Mass.
She doesn't live in Mass.
We don't live in Mass.
Just, I'm not going to argue with you, Mr., whatever your name is.
The sad part, the sad part is, it was publicly stated on social media that you were acquiring legal representation, and shortly thereafter, we received that call. We have no way of knowing differently, and it's unfortunate because with the size of your group and the passion of your group, we would very much like to have a conversation that is respectful of one, very much.
I do understand that.
Excuse me, we cannot speak but one at a time.
I do, I'm sorry.
No, you're, you're at the podium and you have the view.
I do understand that, but I know myself, I can't speak for others, but I do know for a fact that others have reached out, emails, calls, not just to yourself, but to the rest of the council members, and there's been no response.
Because I don't have a clue who belongs to a said group that is seeking legal counsel or not.
I'm, but you can ask. And again, I'm here just representing my two kids, that's who I'm standing up for. I'm not a representative of a group, I'm a mom. That's who I represent.
I'm a mom too, and I solely understand what you're attempting to get across. I do. I'm asking for the same respect that we have to go by a set of rules, and it's unfortunate when the attorney was even brought about that it shut down any ability that we had to have a reasonable conversation.
Can I ask, at what date was this person called? Like, when did this happen?
Approximately 10 days ago.
Okay. Which is after, when I know I reached out and many other people. I think that news clip that I saw that triggered this was at least two weeks prior, so before an attorney even reached out.
It's been four weeks that this has, that I did the two interviews.
There you go.
We're not even supposed to be conversing, but I have a great deal of compassion for anyone that comes before us, whether, I agree with what they come before us, Al can attest to this. Al brings stuff that I never agree with, and I'm sorry, Al, no offense, but, you know, at some point, it's fruitless to have you stand here and thus not say anything.
Yeah.
So, I'm trying really hard to walk a thin line that I'm not putting additional liability on this community, but I'm also available to tell you why we haven't responded.
It, prior to the attorney? Because again, I reached out prior to that.
I'll have to go back and dig up the social media post that said, "We're getting an attorney."
Okay, I know for sure, I didn't post, I know personally, I didn't, I wouldn't post that, but that's...
I understand. And you can under, please put yourself in our shoes. There are many people here with all perspectives and equal passion. We need to try to do our best to be as respectful as each one that has spoken has.
So, moving forward, the next thing that you're offering is, as the council, is communicating, getting in touch with the board, at this point, the Board of Appeals, and trying to come up with a plan to resolve this.
We have not had one day since this was brought before us last month, and that includes weekends, that we haven't been communicating, researching, and asking everything that is within our purview, not one day. So, we're not going to stop until we see what needs to happen and that we continue to follow every jurisdictional law that is applied upon us.
Okay. I just, I hope moving forward that there's a different, there's, you actually can find a way to reach out, you know, to...
Me too.
That would be, all of this could be avoided, the back and forth, if it was just more clear. Okay.
I, I'm gonna, I'm going to say this. Not everyone is as kind as you in their approach to us.
And females.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
I do, I do understand that, and I...
I'll second that.
Okay.
It's very difficult.
At the same time too, and I, and I get the position you guys are all in, you also think about the position that we're in too, when someone or something is threatening your child and their health and the future of them, yes, there are right ways to go about it, and there are wrong ways, but, you know, that's why we're all here. None of us really want to be here, you know?
We're all parents and grandparents.
Angry grandparents.
Every person up here.
I have three kids that go to that school.
So, believe me, I know... That's all I ask, is that we, we continue to communicate as you are doing right now.
So, and then you were able to read the appeal today too, and look at the language in that?
I work a full-time job, 40 hours a week, so I really haven't. I'm working on allocating $125 million right now, and I got to get the budget by Friday, but I will read it.
It was just sent to us today.
Yeah.
I understand that.
Yeah.
But for the health of your three kids that go to Dobie's and all the other kids and teachers that, you know?
Yeah, I'll read it. We'll read it.
Anything that, what you can do...
I just appreciate your kindness.
I agree.
Well, I mean, I...
Because it hasn't been that way.
I think it, I think it would be helpful too if there was some reciprocal communication from all you guys too.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Mark DeJesus?
He's not here.
He's not here, okay. All right. Uh-oh. Last name, Perry, P-E-R-I, Cashmill, from 1979 Feltz Parkway.
Apparently he's not here either.
No one? Okay. Krishna? I can't, from 1775 Feltz Parkway.
He must be outside.
Kamala, Clarin, 1884, Argus River. No one? Virginia, I struck, I put an X beside of the ones that did not respond when their name was called, and I'm sorry, I can't read them all.
Hi.
Hi. Good evening.
Good evening.
John Colosi, I reside at 1513 Melissa Drive.
Thank you.
Um, I'm trying to figure out where to start. I'll probably look down a little bit.
It's okay.
Um, I work in the emergency department, and kids die in my arms. I don't get to be emotional there because I have to work. So, sorry.
It's okay. All right.
Don't know why this is coming up now.
It's okay.
It's all right, man.
I hold degrees in theology, biology, nursing. Okay, let's see here. My wife's probably shocked, I'm crying. Okay, so you...
I'm very proud of you, you take your time.
I apologize. Um... Um, so, you read your statement twice, and you, you mentioned immediate research. I want to, I don't know if it's an open dialogue, but I heard you reached out to DEHEC and EPA. I did as well. Um, I want to know if that research just included more than two emails?
Of course.
Okay. Have you found any evidence-based research suggesting that fuel-holding tanks venting known carcinogenic vapors less than 300 feet from an elementary school poses no health risk to our children? Have we found that?
We are not a research engine, if I can state that we began researching everything from zoning and ordinances and times and laws. We reached out to what is provided to us as experts in that field through the EPA and DEHEC.
I understand. Do you think you've done your proper due diligence in this case?
I do.
When it comes to benzene and the health risks associated with that?
I do.
I wasn't expecting that answer, so my next question is, so you're aware of the associated health risks with benzene inhalation?
I am not.
Okay.
And I'm not on trial either, by the way.
I, I apologize. I'm not used to the court. I just said, "Can I ask some questions?", and so I showed up. I have boards I should be studying for. I don't want to be here. I'm stressed. I want no part of this.
I understand.
I have four articles here. I just want to know, can I give them to you?
Please.
They're peer-reviewed. Dr. Hooty, I don't know her last name, I apologize.
She's on the back row.
She, she referenced a few of them. Uh, I'm a big proponent of systematic review, because it takes together all the articles in that, uh, topic and looks at them. And they show you and tell you there's issues with benzene, and not even high-level benzene, low-level benzene. I just want to give these to you, and I just want to let you know, on average, there's 10% of the kids have asthma. Those are the kids that we intubate. Those are the kids I shove tubes down. Those are the kids that I keep alive. The reason they have exacerbation or asthmatic conditions is because of known, well, they're probably not known, but of some sort of irritant that they inhale. Benzene is one of those things. It's a volatile organic compound. Just like when we paint our walls, we get the low voc or no voc. The reason is because we don't want to be breathing that stuff in. Same idea.
Excuse me.
So, um, I just want to leave these for you.
Please.
So that we can make sure that our research is broad and good.
I think that's great. If you would give them to our town manager, so that he can run copies for each of us, unless you did, and I feel certain that you brought one of each.
I'm sorry, I brought one of each. I apologize.
That's fine, that's fine. But we all represent independently, then collectively, so it would be good for each of us to have it. So, Davey, if you'd get a copy for each of us, that would be great.
We'd be glad to. Thank you for your time, guys.
Thank you so much, and thank you for what you do. That's a pretty impressive background.
Good luck on your boards.
Yes, definitely.
Yeah.
Definitely. Okay. I have no further folks signed in, so we will proceed with the rest of our meeting. Presentations. Presentation number one, swearing-in of Municipal Judge Kyle Hobbs for a new two-year term. Hi. How are you? I'm assuming I'm going to do the honors of swearing you in?
I'll be honored.
Well, that's just amazing. I normally just get to walk. Coming away. I'm sorry, but I'm coming away. Do you want a Bible? I think we got one up here. It's right here. Somebody wants to come around and fold it for me? Huh, please? Lisa?
Be on your hands.
I, Kyle M. Hobbs.
Hi, Kyle M. Hobbs.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge those duties.
Discharge those duties.
And will preserve.
And will preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
As Municipal Judge.
As Municipal Judge.
Of the Town of Fort Mill.
Of the Town of Fort Mill.
I pledge to uphold.
I pledge to uphold.
The integrity.
The integrity.
And independence.
And independence.
Of the judiciary.
Of the judiciary.
I pledge in the discharge of my duties.
I pledge in the discharge of my duties.
To treat all persons.
To treat all persons.
Who enter the courtroom.
Who enter the courtroom.
With civility.
With civility.
Fairness.
Fairness.
And respect.
And respect.
I pledge to listen.
I pledge to listen.
Courteously.
Courteously.
Sit impartially.
Sit impartially.
Act promptly.
Act promptly.
And rule after careful.
And rule after careful.
And considerate.
And considerate.
Deliberate.
Deliberate.
I pledge to seek justice.
I pledge to seek justice.
And justice alone.
And justice alone.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. It is a pleasure to have you on board, Steve.
You did a great job. Thank you. Thank you so much. Old business items. Old business item number one. Second reading. An ordinance annexing York County Tax Map Number 7104002, portion containing approximately 13.15 plus or minus acres, located off Horse Road, Ward 2. This is Councilman Helms, and Penelope is our resident expert. This is a second reading. Do I have a motion?
I'm ready to accept. Old business item number one.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Penelope?
Good evening, Mayor, and council members. No changes at this time. This is second reading of the annexation.
Okay.
I'm here to answer any questions.
Great. Any questions or comments for Penelope? Hearing none. The motion on the floor is to accept this reading. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. That was a unanimous vote. Thank you, Virginia. Old business item number two. You may as well stay a while, Penelope.
Okay.
Second reading. An ordinance authorizing a third amendment to a development agreement by and between the Town of Fort Mill and Leroy Springs and Company Incorporated to amend the property subject to the terms and conditions of the development agreement and other matter relating thereto. This is also Ward 2, Councilman Helms, and Penelope is our resident expert. Do I have a motion?
Move to accept old business item number two.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Now, Penelope, has anything changed?
Nothing has changed, Mayor.
Okay. Any questions for Penelope? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. That was also a unanimous decision. Thank you. New business. New business item number one. New business item, request to approve a facade improvement grant for 100 Main Street Southern Sugar. Do I have a motion?
Make that motion, approve new business item number one.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Penelope, what would you like to tell us?
Sure. The Town of Fort Mill has developed and implemented a facade improvement grant program to encourage reinvestment in and revitalization of the downtown commercial district. This program provides reimbursable matching grants, up to $5,000, to help offset the cost of exterior improvements to a property owner or tenant's commercial building. The applicant proposes the following improvements. One, a horizontal sign to be placed on the southwest facade, the red brick facade facing the railroad tracks with the Southern Sugar Cafe. And then, two, to cover the existing deck patio with a black aluminum roof awning. And then, these attach, that's the actual picture that the applicant has put in the request. The total project cost is $15,000, but the amount that they're requesting is $5,000. A committee was, that the town does have, with staff, three members of staff. We reviewed the application. The application was deemed eligible based on the location of the proposed project and the facade improvements. After discussion, a motion was made to recommend approval of the facade grant application to Town Council was made, and we seconded it. Also, just to note, members of council, it should be noted that the Town of Fort Mill Historic Review Board reviewed and approved this application for a certificate of appropriateness for the facade improvements on April 16th by a vote of six to zero. This is the second facade grant this year that the Town of Fort Mill has done, and, you know, it's a budget cycle, and we have one more that any business is eligible to apply for. We have a maximum of $5,000 left in the budget year for the facade improvement grant. So, tonight, it is basically to approve the requested facade improvement grant and authorize staff to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the applicant, or the second alternative is to deny the requested facade improvement gains. But our recommendation is to actually approve it.
Any questions for Penelope? Hearing none. The motion on the table is to approve, and we have a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. That is a unanimous decision. Okay. Do you get to bend a knee now? New business item number two. A recommendation to award the sewer system evaluation study, and this is Davy Broom. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve new business item number two.
Right. I have a motion and a second. Davy, would you like to speak to any part of this? I think we're all pretty familiar, but...
Yes, ma'am. The action, actually, item two and three go kind of hand in hand.
Okay.
Um, we're going to talk about our sewer system through the town. It's not a very popular subject, but it is a needed, um...
No, it's not.
Needed facility, of course, and so... During our May 13th Town Council meeting, Utilities Director Greg Rushing provided information pertaining to the future operations and maintenance opportunities for the town's sanitary sewer system. We recently completed funding for major utilities projects, namely Phases II of Wastewater Treatment Plan Expansion, Bass Street Elevated Water Tank, and a remote water meter replacement. The most recent adopted bond ordinance brought to light the type of expenditures that could be funded by the Operations and Maintenance Account. These expenditures, items two and three, have been deemed appropriate for the use of the funds. Staff is recommending allocating of funds for sanitary sewer evaluation study. The study includes a total length of pipelines estimated at 277,200 linear feet, and a total number of manholes at 1,273. Staff advertised for this study and received eight proposals from engineering firms. Total funds allocated this project are $225,000, but after careful and detailed review, it is staff's recommendation to award the project to Fraser Engineering for $196,697.
Good job. Good job.
How many bids? Did we get it out right? We had eight. Eight proposals. Yes.
Wonderful. Any questions for Davy?
This will give us mapping, basically, of some of our old sewers.
Yes.
As well, that we don't have a lot of drawings on.
That's wonderful.
It'll assist mapping. It'll address any manholes that may have been covered up over the years. It'll give us some infiltration, I and I study to find out any infiltration into our sewer system. This is a needed study.
And whereas those that may be listening to this may not understand, our sewer system has been disjointed and has a lot of age on it, so we don't always have current drawings that help guide us to the locations that perhaps we would be better making repairs to earlier than others. But this will be a great step forward.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for doing that. Any further questions for Davy? Hearing none. The motion on the floor is to approve new business item number two. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you. As Davy mentioned, new business item number three is a recommendation to award the 2019 Lift Station Rehab Engineering Project. Do I have a motion?
Move to accept new business item number three.
Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Are there any further questions, since he attempted to cover everything?
So, the savings on this was a difference of, allocated 350,000, but I see the bids for 185,000, is that correct?
Yes, it's, the bids are for 185,000, but it also included the engineering permitting, bidding, and construction administration cost. And the project that we really put out for was just for the engineering purposes, so it, the fund should be less than the 185,000.
That's great. Thank you.
Great savings.
Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. It was a unanimous decision. New business item number four. A recommendation to award contract for consulting services for federal government compliance, State Water Pollution Control Revolving Fund, affectionately known as CWSRF loan. And Davy, that's yours. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to accept new business item number four.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Davy, what you need to tell us?
All right. Mayor, the town-made application was approved for the South Carolina State Revolving Fund Loan in the amount of $35 million. We recently learned that the makeup of the loan sources include a mix of federal and state tax dollars. The funding is dedicated to wastewater treatment plant upgrade Phase II. Federal capitalization grants continue to cede the state revolving fund program. Therefore, any money provided to project sponsors through the SRF is subject to federal requirements. This is different than state requirements, so staff, it disrequires specialized services that, that include project compliance administrative services.
Okay.
It's very complex and detailed paperwork and studies that the town does not have qualified staff to do. We reached out to other municipalities in the state that have gone through same SRF loans to find out who they used. It had come down to really just one consultant in this area. That was qualified to handle everything for an SRF loan. That consultant, we reached out to him, interviewed him. They provided us their documentation of the services they would provide us and the cost and the length of time. Length of times for 40 months, that's the time period associated with the construction or completion of the wastewater treatment plant phase two. Staff sought out these specialized services, found this consultant and recommend, recommended, has been provided, is highly recommended and has been provided to complex contractual administrative services to several SRF projects. So after completing background check, staff recommends awarding the contract in the amount of $75,000, Sam Cargill, SRF compliance consultant. And it would begin immediately.
Okay. Any questions for Davy on new business item number four?
Davy, does this put us behind schedule at all with this new addition?
It does not, construction has already began but the sooner we get him on board, he can start the.
The better.
Paperwork, he can start his services.
Okay.
Two-year project, right?
It was.
Forty months?
Forty months.
Okay. With no further questions, the motion on the floor is to approve new business item number four, all those in favor please say aye. Aye, all those opposed nay. A unanimous, thank you. New business item number five, amendment of agreement to fund municipal court attorney for 2019-2020 fiscal year. Davy, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to accept new business item number five.
Second. Second.
Okay, a motion in a couple of seconds. Wanna?
Yes ma'am, thank you Mayor.
I think it's pretty self-explanatory.
Yeah. So basically the, this amendment amends the agreement to fund municipal court attorney. At the written, the original contract included all five municipalities in York County. Fort Mill, City of Rock Hill, City of York, City of Clover, City of Tika Kay.
Okay.
City of Rock Hill caseload grew to a point where they needed to fund their own attorney. So they stepped out of this agreement and funded their own attorneys that left the other four municipalities determining how we were going to fund one position for municipal attorney.
Okay.
So what we've done is after a couple of meetings, determined that the best method is to use a three-year average of indigent services and base a percentage on the number of cases, the case log to each municipality.
Okay.
The, for the town of Fort Mill, our caseload equated to 8,028.70.
Okay.
That would be our portion of this contract.
Okay. Any further questions for Davy?
Yeah, when I first read that, it said that we were picking up Rock Hill's portion but if Rock Hill pulled all theirs out, why would we have to pick up their portion?
Well, their portion.
They're no longer paying into it.
Yeah, they're no longer paying into it.
Also the caseloads went out too.
That's true, that's true but there's still a base salary.
Right, so what, what we did, York County graciously kicked in $20,000 in their budget to cover a portion of Rock Hill's. And then the other municipalities had to cover the other portion. And if you take that included with the three-year average, that's where our, that's where our funds came up.
Awesome.
Will that be a rolling three-year average or will it be the next three years?
It'll be a rolling three-year average and it is only a one-year contract so we would, this time next year or in May of next year, we will reconvene to see where we stand with the caseload then.
They went back to one of our highest caseloads.
Of course.
But it's interesting to note that, you know, Fort Mill had 76, 41, then 11, so we've dropped significantly when you look at this. So we should have a savings come the next cycle.
Yeah, I was surprised that Clover adds to me.
Yeah.
Okay. The motion on the floor is to approve new business item number five. All those in favor please say aye. Aye, all those opposed nay. It's a unanimous decision. New business item number six, 2019 Summer Concert Series Resolution. A resolution designating Walter Y. Elijah Park York County tax map, oh I hate numbers, 0200202001 and all those numbers 02 beside Veterans Park and Main Street, Tom Hall Street to Academy Street as the site of a public festival at which alcoholic beverages may be consumed and to authorize a special event permit for live music and sound amplifying equipment on June the 14th, July the 12th, and August the 3rd. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept new business item number six.
Okay.
A second.
Have a motion and a second. Here's the form that everybody hopefully can pull up on their computers at least once. Okay, any questions for Davy? Caroline or Brown?
Mayor, if we, if we could, could we give a brief presentation of?
Be perfect, that'd be great.
I'm gonna ask our events coordinator Caroline Hasty to give us a little bit of information regarding the summer concert series.
Hi Caroline.
Hi.
I think we're all gonna, I think we're all gonna go apply to be a weatherman. Cause I think, didn't we cancel something tonight because we were told it's going to rain?
80% chance. We are all, when you do outdoor events or have an outdoor job, you are on God's good humor. So, yes Mayor, Council, the summer concert series is upon us and actually begins on Friday night. And we have a slew of activities and events that are coming up for Fort Mill for, throughout the summer. Beginning with the summer concerts, well tonight was summer safety day and we actually, I was sitting there telling Brown, please let it rain once, just one drop in the bucket. Would make me feel a little better.
So you could warrant the cancellation, right?
You know, it is a safety reason that we make those decisions, especially in the summer. When those storm, when those clouds are real high, that's when they start becoming electric, electric. And for safety purposes, we had to make those decisions. So with that being said, our concert on Friday night will be in Walter Elijah Park. And the reason that we're not doing it in Veterans Park for the matter of fact is that Trial by Fire, the band that will be performing that night is actually one of the bands that we had to cancel. For the summer con, for the South Carolina Strawberry Festival, we had lightning and that storm came and this is one of the bands that we had to cancel. They're coming back to perform that evening. And we do have one saving grace, we're actually able to shoot the fireworks that were canceled that night as well. So it's a little mini, the South Carolina Strawberry Festival, we will have some of the similar food vendors, they are invited back. We're getting a pretty good response and we're really grateful for everyone's support. Mayor, then we have in July, we're back at Veterans Park, the original location for the summer concert. And it will be the Extraordinaire's will be performing and it's a beach band and that's in Veterans Park. Cassette Rewind will hit the main street on Saturday, August 3rd. That will be our final summer concert. And we're doing that with Pucker Butt Pepper Company. We're pretty excited, he is going to host a contest and it will be the hottest pepper from Zero Scoville to Pepper Eggs. So people will be invited, please look out for that, more information will be coming as that event forms itself. So it'll be the pepper itself that they'll be competing with.
It's not mandatory.
I don't know.
Don't line me up for that.
Yes. So, but that's with our summer concerts and upon your approval, we'll be able to have, Caroline Elhouse will be our beer provider for June 14th and July 12th. And Hobos will be our beer provider for the Cassette Rewind on August 3rd.
Wonderful, great selections.
Thank you.
Good choice and I will be very grateful with the weather.
Thank you.
Do we have a rain date or?
We do not. There's some, there's a lot of things, bands, you know, they, they're so booked that once we tie in a date, it's hard for them to reschedule. So.
Got it, alrighty then.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, any other questions that you might have for Caroline or Davy? Hearing none, the motion on the floor is to approve new business item number six and we have a second, all those in favor please say aye. Aye, all those opposed nay, thank you.
Thank you.
New business item, yes sir?
I'm sorry, I need to get her up.
Okay.
I need to, I need to speak to new business item number four.
Okay.
For the.
We're backing up Davy, that's not a good thing.
I missed the part where the professional service for this.
Particular item?
For this particular item must be voted on by council to allow us to consider this professional service an exempt position, exempt.
Okay.
Position four so that we can move forward with the contract.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve as an exempt position, the administrative service we need for new business item number four.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor please say aye. Aye, all those opposed nay. Did that get us right? Okay, is that what you needed?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, good. New business item number seven, first reading, an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance for the town of Fort Mill, Article II, Requirements by District, Section 24, COD, CODN, Quarter Overlay District so as to amend the design standards for the district and to provide for other matters relating thereto, Chris Pettit. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve new business item number seven.
Second.
New business item approval and second. I think we've all been a party to discussions, any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor please say aye. Aye, all those opposed nay. Alright, it's a unanimous decision. There are no executive session items this evening. Before we adjourn, Mr. Huntley, for the good of the whole.
I gotta do that?
Yes sir.
Friday, not Friday afternoon, I attended a graduation for Nation Ford High School.
Yes sir.
At the Winthrop Coliseum. And I don't know how many people that thing holds, you know?
I did, once upon a time.
If it's 12,000, there were 10,000 people there. It was amazing. And the most amazing thing of all was my grandson graduating.
Larry, this is videotaped. Congratulations.
And I went to a graduation party with my grandson.
Oh my goodness.
Thank you so much, Lisa?
Same thing, so I would say the most important thing was my stepdaughter graduating, so, but was there also, yes. Congratulations to all the graduates that we have, both of the high schools and colleges in the area. Thank you to our staff, I know there's been a lot of additional workload the last few weeks. It seems like everybody's job, no matter what you do for a living, we're all working twice as hard with half amount of time, doing what we can to be working parents, volunteers, trying to make the community a better place. So thank you guys for not only coming tonight but staying until the end. Appreciate it because there, while this is very important and dear to you guys, a lot of what we do on a regular basis makes a big difference in this community. So we appreciate you coming and staying and look forward to having you in our community for a long time to come.
Thank you.
Trudy? I'll jump to the end. What you got?
I wouldn't expect me to jump to the end.
I like that a little bit of surprise.
You do that quite often, don't you? I did not have one graduate this year, I had one two years ago but. That is a very nice feeling. Again, I'll mention what Lisa just said, thanks to our staff, they work very hard, not just the last couple of weeks or the last couple of days but all the time. And I certainly appreciate everything that y'all do. That's about all I have on such short notice.
Thank you. Chris?
It's gonna be a long time for anybody to graduate in my eyes.
It's gonna seem longer than that.
I have more gray hair, my son asked my mom, Nana, why does daddy have more gray hair than you do? And so, she explained to him.
Cause you moved out, right?
She explained to him.
Two-day girl.
So, but we, good week, we started Bible school last night, First Baptist, you know, want a date night? Still registration open, just drop them off and you can go, but I think we had 250 kids last night. So it was pretty good. On Friday, we got the TEC Dowling Memorial Golf Tournament, 144 golfers, I'm sorry, did you sign up?
I know him, but.
You missed it. So, but we've got an $8,000 golf cart raffling off, so it'll be a good time, a good thing, it's to benefit the foundation for Fort Mill Schools, which raises money for kids who are in need. We have a facility on called Classroom Ready back behind the post office, I believe. Right? And it's, every year they have backpacks where kids who are in need can come get school supplies.
And that's a portion of what they do. They also raise money for teacher scholarships.
Teacher grants.
So that they can help teachers better themselves and better themselves in the classroom. It is an outstanding organization that is very well-run and everyone that I know of supports the hard work that those individuals give.
Touches a lot of lives in our communities, so we're hoping for a good turnout, hoping the rain will hold off on Friday, so.
It will.
That's about all I've got.
Great, thank you Chris.
Chris, I was gonna mention to you that our.
My last grandson of eight will graduate next year.
Eight?
Oh my goodness.
Now I'm working on my great-grandkids, so.
I understand.
And I'm good.
Is that what you got, Trudy, did you have something to add?
I was gonna tell Chris that Bible school at St. John starts next week.
Yeah, we got him signed up for that one too.
We got him signed up for that one too, I know, I figure that you did.
I try really hard not to close any meeting without thanking our staff. It's every day that our first responders are taken into situations that you and I might shy away from or that we might look at as we pass by. They are incredible individuals that give of themselves before they do their own families and I can't thank you enough, always. Shontae, I see you back there, you didn't have a chance to speak to us tonight, but Shontae is our numbers lady and she takes pennies and makes them scream. So thank you so much for what you do. All of you, all of you are incredible individuals by which this council is very proud to represent, always, always. I haven't ever had an employee at this town that I wouldn't be proud enough to adopt into my own. So thank you for what you do because I know that we can be very difficult at times. We all have different perspectives, we all have a thousand questions and we won it yesterday. And I know that what you juggle is incredible. Chris, it's, it's amazing how you keep up with what you do. And I know that it's very difficult at times and somewhat difficult at others, right? Virginia, you never let us down, thank you. And lastly, my fellow council members. You know, I am 63 years old and I don't hide it. And I've lived here all my life, I'm a third generation native of this community. And it is exactly what everyone researches. It has been Mayberry RFD all my life, all my life. We get along and we get along because we choose to. And because we choose to respect everyone regardless of their walk of life. When I was younger, most everybody worked in a cotton mill, nobody really had a lot of automobiles, they walked to work.
I worked there.
You worked there, I worked there. And it was a very humbling existence that produced many great people that put others and this community before themselves. I'm proud to say that the members that I sit with on this council do the same. Even when people say ugly things, I still consider it to be an honor to serve this community. And I will not step away from that. It is an honor to serve this community that is home to all of us. Can't go without saying, hey Josh, thanks so much for joining us. Josh is one of our local residents that is with the Boy Scouts and does a fabulous job with that, his wife's a teacher, kids are amazing, dad sits on the school board, I mean what more is there? An involved resident, thank you for joining us. And thank you to each of you. You served your community well with your passion and you were respectful in your delivery and I thank you for that. With that, I'll entertain an adjournment motion.
Make a motion when adjourned.
Second.
A motion to adjourn and a second, all those in favor please say aye. Aye, opposed nay, thank you so much, have a good evening.